The planning board meeting of the City of New Brunswick for March or April the eighth two thousand and fourteen performed by the chair. Where do you go?
Roll call.
Claire Barber, Kevin Jones, Kathy Ralati, David Fender.
Here.
Joe Cattaneh.
Here.
David R. Stone, Robert E. Ballard, Linda Hunder.
Here.
Andy Catlin.
Here.
Linda Hunder.
Here.
November.
Here. Public announcement over public media.
Please be advised that the notice of office people in public meetings that applies to satisfy that the panel there is sufficient to apply plates on the multiple groups of the planning board of the City of New Brunswick and by the city clerk, like when they appropriate golden board in the lobby of City Hall, seventy-eight buyers, the Brooklyn Thursday, and transfers to the officials who serve the City of New Brunswick, named the home district and star letter.
The example of the power.
United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation under God and in the Father, with the freedom of the US.
The minutes of the board's morning of the late two thousand and fourteen meeting.
If you remember, just as you said, in the minute in the packet, Captain pointed out that he was a blank committee to approve the objective of all of the right management and other changes that you made. I'm not sure if you're aware of it.
Okay.
All fair. All opposed.
The main page in the board's regulations and memorialization of the land and all business that was inherent public comment from construction management associates, the two zero one three to five, site plan variants applications for the construction of the residential building located at seventeen ninth street, lot seventy-one, lot four point zero one, growing districts R, we have five A's and regional and area two.
Yes, members of the board, Thomas, that's also on the path of the application and stuff management associates. I know that there are a decent number of these in the room tonight, and I think it would be helpful to be able to house community members on this, or since our last meeting and communication with council to the council to get one of the objectives or several objectives, with the board, with regard to how this application, this entity, continues tonight, which my find is lie down and I believe very much of all of us, and I think it would be helpful if we either I put it on the record or someone put on the record, what the expectation is right back to me.
Sure, if we do that right back, we could have a couple word of the non-registered last week, right, and say that this is a case, but we put on the record, it's a case of hospitality.
And Andy Catlin as well.
And David Fender.
What will we call at the representative, a lot of, you know, all the work.
Here, this is a lot of this year, but we don't want to.
I mean, you can discuss some discussion of this now, without care.
If you're the next to the application, so far, you're the director of the state of our qualification and the seminary capacity, you're able to activate.
Correct. Thank you.
If the, what will we call when we finish in the last meeting, we had completed, my application had been completed, and that we were in the midst of public comment from the residential public. At that time, I think one of the objectives was represented by the term of Kataraskey, and I believe for the reference of Riley this year, that is, that we cannot see the public comment, and we were going to do a continuation of that public comment. As you know, the, Mr. Riley, you had special experts who were here that evening, who were intended to provide a professional testimony and opposition to the application. Since the nerman of the last meeting, several things have occurred. Mr. Kataraskey no longer represents those objectives. There was a new firm who does represent those objectives, and I know several of them are here. I had a conversation with him yesterday, and he firmly notified the city of this new individual, and they're coming by the name of the county attorney. And I know that he indicated to me that he did not see her this evening because of the uncertainty we have with Kataraskey. I know that Mr. Barter, the shorthand reporter here this evening, but she is seven years old, who was taking the train with the community on the evening. The expectation for this evening, which was arrived at through the request of Mr. Kataraskey, which Mr. Barter confirmed with me yesterday, is, and the reason he's not here, is that it is not our expectation this evening that those objectives will be proceeding or represented by him with their formal objective presentation, rather that will be continued to the May thirteenth meeting, and it was after request of Mr. Kataraskey's client, one client, because it was unknown whether or not she was going to be able to be here this evening. Now, I didn't know that she's here, and I'm happy that she's here, which is good for her, I think, but that, because that is what the understanding was, that we really still see that her formal presentation through her attorney, through their professionals, will still be a major dispute. And I believe also that Mr. Barter represents several additional individuals who I know are also here this evening. And I just have to note that I think to the record, you should know that, because when the language is all, when individuals are represented by council, they speak through council and not on the ground. So, I believe he does. Well, they, they may want to indicate that. I, I do have an understanding.
If the, the letter from Mr. Jim Barter, from the half drag associates, notes that he represented Jennifer O'Neill, Alejandro Givina, Jonathan Mills, and David Fender, who are residents of Teanmont Street and in Teanmont.
I believe they're, they're actually all here this evening, so that they, again, they are, they will be speaking through their council, assuming that we have to. With that as, as the basic understanding of how this will continue this evening, my find you lie down on that as well. We have most of the amount of all of our professionals who were here for the last meeting, and we have others who are here to answer questions, and maybe come up as necessary for other members of the public. But because of that, essentially what we're doing is a continuation of public fear. At some point, when there's no more public fear this evening, that will then be continued to the next meeting. Technically, what's happening with these other professional testifiers, the now that it's still a continuation of public fear, I just wanted to make sure that we had that clear on the record, and that members that are here to speak on this application, you know that as well. And with that, I have nothing to say other than.
And I pray to the Lord, I can come out here and talk on your own. And I will open the door to the public.
Can you raise your right hand, state any mistake, by the way, I think you need to explain.
My name is Kevin O'Neill, O-N-E-Y-L-L.
And you just sort of all do them that.
I, sir. You want me to stand over there? I know you would do.
If you'd like just to leave and speak out, so we can take it on, or whatever.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you have to speak to the floor.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kevin O'Neill. I'm the father of Jennifer O'Neill. I inherit a concern from my daughter and her family, who live next door to the subject property. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Originally, I intend to address three items, but I believe others will speak about parking and drainage, so I will link my remarks to the master plan, land use plan, zoning ordinance and the College Avenue redevelopment areas. Lot seventy-one, lot four point oh one, as indicated this evening, is shown on the DeBreswick zoning map as being the R five A zone. It is also depicted as such on the Toronto Engineering spreadsheet. R five A defined in the zoning ordinance is as medium density, single family and two family residential. To quote the zoning ordinance in section seventeen point oh four, point oh four zero, paragraph C six, quote, "The intent and purpose of this district is to provide for the expansion and preservation of the integrity of high density, single family and two family residential areas within the community by prohibiting the further development of garden apartments and apartment buildings and the conversion of single family and two family dwellings into multiple family dwellings and preserving the nature of the character of the neighborhood." This definition is also repeated in the land use plan on pages eighteen and nineteen. Actually, a low rose apartment building, excuse me, a low rise apartment building, such as the ones proposed by the applicant, is allowed in the R six A zone, but not in the R five A zone. It's not even a conditional use in the R five A zone. Because lot four point oh one, in addition to being zoned R five A, is also within the district known as Area Two in the College Avenue redevelopment plan, I believe a misunderstanding has taken place. In the redevelopment plan, section seven, paragraph A, it states that, quote, "The redevelopment area is located in the I one zone," end quote. As I had pointed out already, that is inaccurate. This portion of Area Two is zoned R five A. The area zoned I N one is across Mine Street, across from the subject property. It appears the redevelopment plan actually prohibits the building as proposed by the applicant, and any of the three redevelopment areas. In speaking about all the lands of the redevelopment areas, on page ten, paragraph D, entitled Land Use Control, it states, "All such land shall be developed in accordance with and subject to the control, regulations and requirements set forth in the official zoning ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, adopted June sixth, two thousand and seven, for development within the I N one zone." Quote, paragraph G, one, B, I, in the zoning ordinance, principal permitted uses in the I one zone are educational research, cultural, agricultural research, athletic, library, dormitory, university owned apartments and classrooms in accordance with the normal master plan. Even if lot four point oh one were spots owned I N one, the zoning ordinances and the redevelopment plan both state that the apartments have to be university owned. So on page twelve of the redevelopment plan, where it states on the chart for Area Two, table one, that quote, "Low and mid-rise housing," end quote, is permitted, that is true, but only if university owned. Since this project is also called Theological Seminary Housing, one might think that the university is the owner of the property, but that's not accurate. As a matter of fact, the Theological Seminary will not even be operating the building. That may have been the hope when Henry Bignell, the board planner, wrote his letter dated November thirteenth, twenty thirteen, stating, quote, "The building will be operated by the DeBreswick Theological Seminary," end quote. That is not now the case. The building would be privately owned, privately operated. By the way, it is in this same letter that Mr. Bignell states that the, quote, "Proposed use is not consistent with the master plan's land use recommendations." That's page two, paragraph two. Further, and I quote from the redevelopment plan on page nineteen, paragraph one, A, "New buildings must conform to design guidelines. All new buildings," I'm quoting, "all new buildings should be related harmoniously to the terrain, meaning natural features, and to existing buildings and other substantial structures in the vicinity that have a visual relationship to the proposed building." And in paragraph B on the same page, entitled Building Height and Setting, "A particular location of new buildings on a site should provide an appropriate harmonious relationship to existing area structures, landforms and water bodies in terms of height, setback, view, preservation and related aspects." Last link, under paragraph C on the same page, entitled Building Design Elements, "The building facade should reflect the size, scale and setback of adjacent buildings and those across the street." I could go on and on and on, but I think you get the point. It is abundantly clear that the zoning ordinances, the land use plan, the master plan and the College Avenue redevelopment plan are all opposed to the construction of a four-story, fifty-seven unit apartment building on this site, particularly by a private developer. Only Rutgers University can construct a low-rise apartment building, and only in the I went I N one zone, which is across the street from the subject property. The parcel known as lot four oh one, is zoned R five A, is only to host medium density, single family or two family dwellings, which provide appropriate harmonious relationship to existing area structures. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Bruce Newling. I got sworn in at the last meeting. Do I get sworn in again?
Excuse me, sir. Is there anyone who did not speak in the last meeting, or like you heard? We're going to take new, new, um.
All right. You'll let me know when I can get up, but I'll come again.
Okay. All right, please head forward.
Raise your right hand, state your name and history.
My name is Jukal Moshkay, last name is B E J, three one.
Can you split over to the left? Yes.
So I'm the landlord of two properties that are joined at the back of the building that is in construction on Mine Street. I own properties on Twenty Two Stone, which is lot seventy-one, lot fifty-four, that's Twenty Two Stone, and lot seventy-one, lot five one, fifty-one, one zero two, and it's in construction. And both my properties are joining the new construction on Mine Street from the back. And I have major issues of fighting myself, and I own property on Twenty Two and Ninety Street, and the law is fighting, and it's not letting me extend my property because of fighting issues, because I don't have a drive away on, on my property. Today, something I cannot extend, or I cannot am working, because I don't have fighting rights, and I do not get it. And on a weekday, I'm there all the time, going there, doing that to the house, and my kids have major issues of fighting. Even I have issues of fighting. But if you allow this building to come up, I don't know how they fight. All my kids are fighting. My houses are not ready, because the kids don't have no fightin'.
You wouldn't try to fight them?
I know, but that's not sufficient, right? You know? I mean, I don't want to go through all that, because you're a girl.
I know, I'm giving up the right, but.
I, you know what? I know, but there's a house on stickers that is owned by the state, and that I've been told, I don't know. And my property is the corner property of Rasper, which is like the next to that building. It has seventeen apartments, which are the sixteen, and regular apartment in one that I can't. And I personally have seen kids who fight on the street and go inside that building. I, because I'm getting my house constructed on through Rasper, I am there almost every single day, and I see this fighting on the street, running inside that building. So I know fighting is a issue. My kids don't get fighting. They call me with the bar, they, they're fighting there, you know? So, and this is not fair, because I'm a small homeowner, and I don't, it's a mission. Thank you.
First, for the record, so we can have a witness, give a review of the record. I'm not really interested.
It should, it should, I think, I think this is.
Is there any, any public?
Just for the record, I just had a curiosity, because I know the New York Board before, I know we live over there, so we all can, we can do that.
Is that correct?
My name is Bruce Newling, and I live at forty-seven Hunting Street in New Brunswick. Good evening. The first is the issue of the building size. I feel in certain sense that what I have to say may be almost redundant, given the devastation wrought upon this target by Mr. O'Neill, but I will say what I have to say, because I may touch on other points. First, why has a building of this size been proposed for this size in the first place? If forty-three parking stops for off-street parkings is all that the developer can provide, given the size of the lot, why cannot a building of twenty-three apartments be built, having the same proportionate mix of studios, one bedroom and two bedroom apartments, so that the parking variance would not be needed? Second, why has a building of this width, with side yards only five feet wide, been proposed for this site in the first place? If P S E and G needs the heck of a access to the transformer in order to service it from time to time, why cannot the building be reduced in width so that a twelve foot wide right-of-way could be provided along the side of the building, allowing the transformer to be located at the rear of the building, and thus negating the need for a variance for the transformer's location at the front of the building? The second issue is the issue of the site relevance of the building. Why is a building of this type and purpose deemed appropriate for the Rutgers University Development Zone? Mr. Mitchell Broder of Construction Management Associates has stated that first floor will be reserved for occupancy by seminarians of the New Brunswick Theological Seminary, and that the apartments on the other three floors will be available on the open market for any qualified applicant. Qualified applicants presumably include young professionals working in New York, Princeton, Philadelphia, or anywhere else easily accessible to New Brunswick by mass transportation, individuals who have less need of automobiles, and whose occupancy of the apartment serves, in the view of the consultant of the applicant, to justify a reduced number of off-street parking stalls. So if the purpose of the Rutgers Development Zone is to serve the needs of the Rutgers University community, particularly the needs of its students, why is a building being considered that will, to a greater or lesser degree, serve the needs of people who are not members of the Rutgers community? Does Rutgers University elsewhere on its campus, in the Riverside dorms, for instance, reserve the rooms on the first floor of the dorms for few, and make rooms on floors above available to others on the open market? Second, why is the proposed seventeen Mine Street building designed with apartments rather than with dorm rooms? Much has been made by the applicant of the accessibility of the site to Rutgers facilities and the Rutgers bus services. Again, the Rutgers bus service availability has been invoked to justify a reduced number of parking stalls on the side of the proposed building. Might not the accessibility of the dining facilities at the commons and in the student's center a short distance away, around the corner in that College Avenue, be seen as an opportunity to dispense with apartments equipped with kitchens and erect a building of dorm rooms for which the rent would be a great deal cheaper than the rent for apartments where students would not be competing with outsiders for the available units, a building that would provide safety and amenities at reasonable cost to students and the parents upon whose financial support those students in large part attend? Built as a dormitory, a building on this site should be designed to be harmonious within the neighborhood in terms of its height, width and depth, and at the same time provide accommodation for more students than can a building of self-contained apartments, each of which includes a kitchen. Built as a dormitory, a building on this site would greatly reduce the dependency upon rental properties in New Brunswick that are poorly maintained by landlords and often prohibited in cost, rent control notwithstanding. It seems to me that in the present case, the Rutgers University Development Zone is being used as a Trojan horse by which to insert into the sixth floor yet another large commercial building that at best will only partially serve the needs of the Rutgers University community, and that is not compatible in terms of its size and design with its immediate neighborhood. There is one more point that I should like to make with respect to applications that come before the planning board. Concern is now being voiced in this country about the inequitable distribution of wealth and the need to increase minimum wages, as a consequence of which, some communities in the United States are already moving to increase minimum wages for workers within those communities. In this context, I think the City of New Brunswick should act to require that any developer seeking a variance for a building in New Brunswick post a performance bond to assure that all persons in the construction trades employed on a building for which a variance has been granted will be paid at the prevailing hourly rate for such work in the state of New Jersey. Municipal elections are to be held in November this year, and the issue of fair pay for the construction trade workers will play a role in that election. In conclusion, the wider public interest is not best served by the proposed building for which variances are being sought, and accordingly, I believe the planning board has an obligation to reject the application for variances for parking and the citing of the proposed building's electrical transformer. Thank you.
Yes.
Can you raise your right hand, state your name and history, left hand, please?
Elizabeth Ciccone, C-I-C-C-O-N-E.
Can you split over to the left?
I do. I just wanted to say, good evening. I am a homeowner in the City of New Brunswick. I own the Wellington Johnson House at fifty-two Wellington Street. Our building is on the State and National Register of Historic Places. Because of that, I'm fairly familiar with how, how these large-scale city projects can impact a historical neighborhood like the one at Mine Street. And I just want to comment that this is a quality of life issue for the city as a whole. It's not just about the one strip of houses of the people that live on Mine Street. All of us in the city are impacted by the destruction of our historical and cultural heritage, and to see this type of building being proposed is a, really an ugly encroachment on an otherwise very lovely and traditional New Brunswick neighborhood.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, state your name and history.
First name Gregory, last name Basilis, Phil D S Boyd, E Z Viver, I L F A, five.
He was a front lawyer?
I did. Five Mine Street, which is two doors down from the proposed project. I'm the Episcopal chaplain to Rutgers University. I've been serving in that capacity for about nine years. The Episcopal chaplaincy has been based at Five Mine Street Canterbury House for about The Episcopal chaplaincy has been based at Five Mine Street Canterbury House for about sixty years. Over my period of service, I've noticed progressively worsening traffic and parking conditions in the neighborhood and that's also raised in safety concerns. Often there is double parking as people make deliveries to drop off friends, deliver food in the neighborhood. There's often glaring horns that people bless their attention to trying to navigate through the tight streets. I've noticed how competitive parking has become for students and visitors. And there often are residents of the neighborhood who find cars parked in front of their driveways. Sometimes the students do things out of desperation and wait for classes. They park a car where they can, they run, they hope they come back, not to find a ticket. Sometimes they win, sometimes they lose, but it makes for a difficult situation for residents in the neighborhood. Apart to Rutgers staff who've had to modify their work schedules in order to find parking, the university has eliminated a lot of its own spaces. It's building a thousand dormitory beds in the vicinity of Mine Street. And knowing something about human nature and how we sometimes do things out of necessity or desperation, I fear that the parking situation will just get worse and worse. I've also observed how traffic can build up in the neighborhood. If there is an accident on Route Eighteen or even on the New Jersey Turnpike, traffic will often divert into the College Avenue neighborhood, into blockages and backup. I also am concerned about stormwater runoff. We recently had to waterproof the basement at Canterbury House two years ago. The situation has been getting worse and worse in terms of water seeking to infiltrate our basement and so I'm concerned about any development that might add to the stress on our own property concerning water issues as well. Apart from the parking issues and the traffic issues, also I want to express my concern for the neighborhood as a neighborhood and more especially for the people who live there, especially the owner occupants. I was reading through the master plan, which is available online. I noted the concern in that plan for the sixth ward and the fifth ward and the declining rates of owner occupancy. And I fear that this project will further destabilize the neighborhood and discourage homeowners from retaining their properties and occupying them or from moving in and making a valuable investment in those neighborhoods. Consider the possible impact of a large project on property values where people have their equity built into their homes, especially older people. They often have fewer options. And so I would like to see a project, I'd love to see that property redeveloped, but I'd love to see a proposal that would be more proportionate to the neighborhood and actually enhance the fabric of community so as to encourage owner occupancy in the sixth ward and the College Avenue neighborhood. It seems like there's a lot of creativity on part of the builder that could be employed to help arrive at a project that would meet the needs of the builder, but also fit better into the neighborhood and also then advance the goals described in the master plan as stabilizing the neighborhood and reversing a trend away from owner occupancy in the city of New Brunswick, especially in the sixth ward, the College Avenue neighborhood. So I urge you as the planning board to consider this great public good and the residents of the neighborhood and to work with all parties to arrive at a just and fair and livable development for that property. Thank you.
Very good public comment. Would you step forward?
My name is Glenn, can you raise your right hand, speak your name and spell your last name, please?
Glenn Olendorf, O-L-L-D-N-D-O-R-F, as in Frank.
Can you spell the whole of your name back?
Yes. Can I ask a question of Mr. Broder? Excuse me?
Very good.
Eighty-five Eastern. I'm very concerned about the parking variance. I've observed for many years that we have a terrible problem with parking and it seems to be getting worse year by year. And I was very alarmed when I heard Mr. Broder's parking expert, I think it was Mr. Alivo, on the audio from the last meeting, saying that the system of residential permit parking seems to be working fairly efficiently. That really astonished me because I actually live there. I have to eat dog food and I don't see how anyone who knows what's going on there could make a statement like that. And a question I'd like to ask, is Mr. Broder and his parking experts here? Can I ask a question of them?
What is the question?
My question to them, would we all agree that under New Jersey law, if the proposed parking variance will not result in adequate parking for the building's residents and their visitors, then that variance has to be denied? Is everyone in agreement on that?
The proposed question is in the context of the legal review of the void values of the variance. And so we have to expect that we do not collect, the variance is being sought under the simple use of any of the sections that we said we should include in the sixth quarter.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Because the reason for the parking down, the void of the value of the variance, again, the exception to any of that.
So you're saying that the variance can be granted even if it will result in parking that is not adequate for the building's residents and their visitors?
It's hypothetical that it's really kind of impossible to grant the question. We're going to evaluate whether we grant the variance based on the...
Well, if I can quote to you from the New Jersey Administrative Code, Title Five, Chapter Twenty-One, Paragraph Four Point Fourteen A, looks... And it's quoted in Mr. Alivo's letter to the board. Part of the ARCS standard... Here's my, I'm sorry. It says, "An adequate number of on-street and off-street parking spaces shall be required in all developments to accommodate residents and visitors." And you're saying that doesn't govern him?
I'm not sure how to answer a question other than to say this. There is a standard that applies in every application with regard to how many parking spaces you are required to provide, whether it be a large apartment building, a one or two family house. And the RSIS standards are a statewide standard that was implemented twenty-some years ago to be uniform across the state. However, the RSIS, and the RSIS standard is one that applies here simply because we read it up in the plan of the council and through, however, the board has the power, as you know them, under the land use law, to grant a variance from that if it is satisfied from the testimony that's provided through the expert witnesses and from the public providing their own comments and experience in the neighborhood to determine whether or not we have met the standard of granting a variation from that standard, which the state allows you to do because in effect you are finding that what is being proposed is adequate for the application. That's a finding that, as you know, the board will have to determine based upon the expert testimony that's being provided and, as you know, our expert provided actual experiences from similar locations in the city of New Brunswick, from this developer and others, and provided that as some basis to provide support for their variance. The board then has to be satisfied that those proofs meet the standards under the land use law that say we must be able to show positive, and as you know, the lawyer, the positive criteria and the negative criteria. The board weighs that to determine whether or not we've met that standard. So yes, there are basic standards that are provided by the state in this case for parking, which can be varied from, and for all standards. There are comments that were made previously with regard to the redevelopment plan. We meet all of those standards in the redevelopment plan. We are consistent with what the zoning provides for here. It's based upon a redevelopment plan that the city implemented through this planning board to provide for what is required. We are asking to vary on the parking. We have provided proofs in support of it, not only based on what we think, but what we've actually experienced in other projects. It's up to the board to weigh that. That standard is accurate. The language that's in that standard is accurate, but the board has the ability to vary from. If I can clarify that because I misspoke. See, I believe I misspoke because typically, I represent a number of boards. Typically when an applicant requests a variance for parking, other than the standard that is included, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, and that's the standard. In this case, though, it's a little bit different. They're applying, and you have the right section, they're applying under the residential security, and so in that, for this particular case, since they're deviating from the requirements, the parking requirements that are set forth in the paper, the RSIS will call you. If you're going to apply by less parking than what's set forth in the paper, then what we have to demonstrate is that the plan that you have better reflects local conditions. And that's the standard the board will be evaluating whether to grant relief by the rest. Does their plan better reflect the local conditions that are required set forth in the paper? I'm sorry I misspoke, but that's a hypothetical board. And here, as I say, we're really kind of saying the same thing, using different words based upon whether it's a parking variance that's traditionally looked at or an RSIS variation. You're still attempting to convince the board that what you are proposing is to write proposals in this location. However, however you want to say it otherwise, with lawyer language, that's what we're doing.
Well, I think you're both off on this. I think what the residential site improvement standards that I quoted require, I think it says that there can be a variance from the numerical requirements, but only if the variance will result in adequate parking for residents of the building and their visitors. You still have to meet that threshold. If you don't meet that threshold, that non-numerical threshold, the variance has to be rejected. That's what ARCS is telling us here. And it sounds to me like you're saying, no, we can stick here with a building that doesn't have adequate parking. Is that... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm being...
But I think if you take a look, when you're not speaking, you can take a look at Section Five Point Twenty-One dash Four Point Fourteen, you'll follow the reference of the language.
Well, that's what I'm talking to you about. That's the very language I'm talking to you about. I believe that from what I've read in those standards, you don't have the authority to give a variance if the amount of parking will not be adequate. And it's very alarming to me and I'm very surprised you seem to be saying we can give a parking variance that will result in inadequate parking.
Do you have any other issues you want to add?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The understanding that I have from what Mr. Broder and his experts testified to is that they and other developers have had comparable properties with comparable parking ratios very nearby and they had no problem renting out the apartments and it's a big success. So that means that there was adequate parking there and so this similar project will also have adequate parking. But there's a great big hole in that argument, which is that we have in New Jersey, we've had for many, many years, a severe shortage of affordable housing. And it's particularly severe in central New Jersey and it's especially severe in New Brunswick and it's even more severe in the sixth ward. This is ground zero for that shortage, the sixth ward. And that, you might not know this because you don't live there, but when you have a severe shortage like that, it creates a situation where people are desperate for housing. And when people are desperate for housing, landlords and developers can make tons of money while providing facilities that are unstable, that create terrible conditions and don't meet the needs of the community or the tenants. And the tenants accept it and they rent there, not because it meets their needs, but they don't have a choice. So the fact that people rented these apartments in Mr. Broder's other comparable developments and in other developers' developments, the fact that they're not having any problems, and I'm sure they're making tons of money, that doesn't mean that there was adequate parking. It doesn't mean that there was adequate anything. What it means is that they can get away with anything they want because they're the developers, they're the landlords, they have the power. The tenants are weak, they're powerless, they have to take what they can get. Yeah, yeah. There's been claims that there's no detrimental impact on the community, which I think is clearly contradicted by certain facts. Only, we've been told that these variances can be given out where there's a waiver. The developer waives the right of his tenants to get parking permits. So even if there's not adequate parking, the existing residents are protected. They're not going to be harmed. There's a firewall that will protect the rest of the community from harm and the people who will suffer are the people who are only living in that one building. But one of the holes in that is that not all of the streets require permits for parking. Some of them do and some of them don't. And what I've observed over the years that you've been giving out these variances is that there's less and less, the problem of parking on all of the streets is worse and worse. And it seems obvious to me that if someone's living in one of these buildings and they can't get a parking permit, they're going to park on streets that don't require a permit and then there's going to be overflow from those streets that will affect all the streets that do require a permit. So there will be a detrimental impact on the community. There has been, something has been causing it to get worse and worse year by year and I can't figure out what it could be other than the fact that you're allowing these buildings to be constructed and you're giving out these parking variances. So I don't think that, I think that there's another big hole in what we've been told. And there's another issue, which in the end could be a much bigger problem. We've been told that, again, the residents of this building won't be able to get residential parking permits. And you've done that same arrangement with parking variances at many other buildings, including buildings that were developed by... other buildings, including buildings that were developed by Mr. Broder. But I think the problem with that is that our system of law does not allow landlords to waive the rights of the tenant. If we had that, then we'd be back in the Dark Ages. There would be no such thing as rent control, there would be no such thing as the Anti-Eviction Act. Landlords would waive all kinds of rights for their tenants that landlords don't like. If you look at the New Brunswick ordinance that controls the system of residential permit parking, it does not give, the right of a permit is the right of the resident who lives in New Brunswick. It's not the landlord's right to say that the tenant can't get a permit. That right belongs to the tenant. There's nothing in that law that allows the landlord to take it away, or waive it, or forfeit it. And even if the law, only the city council has the authority to rewrite that law, this board does not have the authority to change the New Brunswick parking ordinances. Only the city council has that authority, and only if they go through proper procedures to allow for public participation. And even if that law was somehow interpreted or modified to allow the parking permits to be withheld from all of these people who would be living at Seventy-nine Street, even if you did that, I think that the law would be unconstitutional, because the Supreme Court of the United States-
(inaudible).
Okay, the constitutionality of that, of having those waivers. Okay, then I'll skip over that.
Do you have any other comments?
Just like the, oh yeah, yeah. As far as something I think that this board should think about, is that if the system of the developer waiving the rights of the tenant is relied upon the way you've been doing to give out these variances, and the way you've been asked to do, again, if you rely on that, there's a danger that at some point, one of these tenants is going to lawyer up, maybe with a pro bono lawyer, maybe it won't cost them anything. Take a walk to the courthouse and get a court order that starts down this practice of denying the permits to people who live in these buildings, because it violates the Constitution of the U.S., and the Constitution of New Jersey, and New Brunswick's own law. And when that happens, you may have hundreds, maybe even thousands of people who are suddenly entitled to parking permits, and nowhere for people to park. And the people who could wind up without parking aren't going to be the people who just newly got those permits. It's whoever gets to the parking space first that day is going to park, and whoever gets there second is the one who gets to spend the night driving around and around looking for a parking spot. I mean, this would plunge the Sixth Ward into chaos. And it seems to me that this is something that requires some planning. You're a planning board, and I think someone who lives and deals with this parking problem day to day, I just don't see any evidence that anybody plans anything. I don't see any evidence that anyone's paying any attention to the actual reality, and the whole lack of knowledge possessed by Mr. Broder's parking experts is very shocking to me. They seem to know absolutely nothing about what's actually going on.
(inaudible). Thank you for your concerns and your comments. Do you have any other (inaudible)?
There is some further research that I've been doing, I was not able to complete it in time for tonight. Would it be possible for me to present that at the next meeting?
Yes, (inaudible).
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any other type of comments? (inaudible).
I just have one quick comment to make. I live on Fifty Union Street. I see Union Street, I'm living there for three days now. If you find a spot on Union Street, you don't give up that spot, because there's two days you change your spot, and there's two days you change your spot when the street's been cleaned. Other than that, I have friends who live on Union Street, I have friends who have cars, me and my brother share a car. If you find a spot, you either save that spot, or you trade that spot to someone else, or you sell that spot, because you're not finding it by the Union Street. And I feel there's few streets where you don't (inaudible). And as you guys know, Union Street is exactly (inaudible). Just had that quick comment to make, I live on Union Street, and I know very well how extremely difficult it is to find parking on Union Street. Thank you.
Thank you. (inaudible).